2023. Today's invocation will be given by Reverend Daniel Tatum, critical care chaplain at Christus St. Elizabeth Hospital. Everyone, please silence your cell phones and if you so choose, please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Great God of heaven, we meet before you and under your gaze with a great deal on our hearts. Our hearts are heavy in the loss of our dear friend and family member Allison. Your creation within her shined in our midst, and the legacy of her efforts within our community go beyond any mere words. As we grieve her loss, hold us tenderly and help us to honor her with our ongoing commitment to the community she so loved. We also hear of war and unrest, the shedding of innocent and not so innocent blood, and the ongoing upheaval within our global community in Israel, Gaza, and Ukraine, as well as other regions in the world. In the midst of these hearings, we are aware of the stakes of tending our community here well, knowing that our community, like others, embraces a great many peoples' perspectives and commitments. As we gather to make decisions, weigh perspectives, and care for the city of Beaumont, we ask for your wisdom and your heart to care for all and rise above what may sometimes be tempting partisan perspectives. Help us as a community to be whole, to be peaceful, and to embrace the gift of our diverse peoples. And so with these things on our hearts, we ask for your blessing on tonight's deliberations. Enable us to speak with honesty, sincerity, and charity as we work together to forge better community and city here in Beaumont. In particular, guide these leaders and honor their efforts and sacrifice that they may lead us well to healthy, safe, and whole community life. In your heavenly name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have roll call, please?
Mayor West.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Turner.
Present.
Councilmember Durio.
Present.
Councilmember Getz, absent. Councilmember Felshaw.
Present.
Councilmember Samuel.
Present.
And Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Thank you.
Today, we have one proclamation. Tina Broussard, our city clerk, will read the proclamation. After it is read, I will announce your name and you and any members of your group may come to the podium and shake hands and we'll get a picture at that time.
Whereas people who are sighted often take mobility for granted, challenges abound for the blind as they navigate the world around them. And whereas in Texas, we know that it is not our challenges that define us, but rather how we rise above them. And to this end, the white cane is an important symbol of blindness and is a tool that represents independence and is widely respected. And whereas on Tuesday, October 17th, 2023, the Beaumont Area Council of the Blind, Inc. presents a white cane walk on Main in honor of the Blind Americans Equality Day and National Disability Awareness Month. And whereas the walk will commence in front of City Hall, 801 Main Street, at 9:00 a.m. Now therefore, Roy West, mayor of the city of Beaumont, Texas, does hereby proclaim Tuesday, October 17th, 2023, as annual National White Cane Safety Awareness Day in the city of Beaumont, and commend the organization of the Beaumont Area Council of the Blind, Inc., BACB, serving Beaumont since 2009 for bringing awareness to our community in this observance. Accordingly, the mayor has hereunto set his hand and caused the seal of the city of Beaumont to be affixed, signed Roy West, on this day, October 17th, 2023.
And accepting will be Mr. Kenneth Simeon, Senior, President of the Beaumont Area Council of the Blind.
Thank you, Mayor West and the city council for acknowledging White Cane Safety Day. And the Beaumont Area Council of Blind is very grateful for all you do for our city and thank you for including us in the activities. And we love to get more familiar and connected in our community and want to help other people who are blind or visually impaired to do so as well. A number of us are gainfully employed and I know you may not see a lot of us out in the community with our white canes, but a lot of people see us with this cane and they call it a stick, but it's really a white cane. And we ask everybody, when you see someone walking with that, to respect that cane, especially if they're trying to cross the street. They may benefit from some assistance, but thank you so much for acknowledging that. And also, we recognize today Blind Americans Equality Day. And that really emphasizes the fact that we are contributing to society and we just love to be a part of more in our city and our community. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Let's get over here, too. All righty, all right, we're gonna take a photo and then one, two, and three. And take one more, one, two, and three. All righty, thank you guys so much.
For those that are here for the proclamation and would like to leave, now's the time to do so and thank you for coming. Now's the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. You may make public comments on the consent agenda and regular agenda items, 1 through 3. Items 4 through 6 have already been heard in public hearing. You may also speak on any matter of public concern. The city clerk will call your name when it is your time to speak. When you approach the podium, please say your address, city, and state. We ask that you keep your comments to 3 minutes. The green light will come on when you approach the podium. The red light will come on when your time is up. And you will have, should have registered on the kiosk as you walk in.
Tony Lucenti, I think, is how you pronounce the last name? Okay, perfect.
All right, thank you. I had a water leak back on September 1st. It was repaired on September 2nd. The hole is still there, the concrete's still there. They, they want to replace my apron of the driveway, but they only want to do about a third of the apron. And I said that the problem with the backhoe sitting on the apron made the driveway sink. I've been in contact with Mr. Getz. He came over, he's seen what I had. I've been in correspondence with the city with about 3, 4 different people. No one wants to recognize that the whole thing has to be fixed. I had this, workers, when they came out and they were cutting the driveway, they actually separated, they cut the apron away from the main driveway. They had the saw, they cut it. And they told me the whole apron was going to be replaced. The people that did the repair said the same thing. They're going to replace the whole, the whole apron. Well, the city says no. They say yes, they say no. They broke the irrigation. One of the emails indicated that they didn't know when the leak, when the leak occurred. Well, if they would come out, they would see when the leak occurred. They could see it. It was right at the, at the hole that was broke with the bulldozer. I don't let anything stay broke in my yard. I refix it, I like my yard to look good. They don't want to replace the whole apron, and I don't understand why. I've talked to them. It's very difficult to talk to anybody in any office in the city. You just can't talk to them. I've tried. The only way I talked to Bart, I don't know how to say his last name. Bart Pan. I called him today and actually got a call back. The only reason I was able to call him is because he was in the emails. So I had his phone number. And it's, it's been, it's been a nightmare. Mr. Getz has been out there. He looked at it, I explained everything to him. He could see it, he took pictures. He agreed with me on it. He corresponded with the city. They still don't want to do it. They, and no one's been out there and talked to me since September, September 2nd. No one has come out and talked to me. That's all I ask is come out, look at it, and let's talk about it, let's see what happened. I'm concerned when they cut away my, my apron from the driveway, what's going to happen to that apron? You keep driving on it, eventually it's going to sink away from the driveway. So I just asked for help with trying to get it resolved. I know Bart is going to come out tomorrow. We talked today. They're going to come out tomorrow and we're going to kind of talk about it, so.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time and thank you.
John Clark.
I'm here to talk to you folks about the park on Calder noise. I drove around Saturday night, 2-block radius, with my windows open. You could hear it, 2-block radius. We live 3 blocks away, you can still hear it. Somebody overdrank at the bar, ran through our fence, did about $30,000 worth of damage to our property. No insurance. We called the police. The police say that they're tired of hearing complaints. Called the police on Saturday night. Non-emergency number. They said they'd send somebody out. Noise got louder. I drove around Broad Street. There's cars parked on both sides. It would make a very hazardous situation if an ambulance or a fire truck had to go down the road. 12:50, I drove around again, loud as can be still. I called the police again. The dispatcher said, I'll send somebody out. They sent somebody out. While the police officers are talking to me, we watched 2 vehicles pull out of the parking lot from the park, drive down the one-way street on Liberty. The police officer says, all I can do is give you, what do they give you, an incident report, okay? They're tired of it, the neighborhood's tired of it. What are you folks going to do about the noise? So I, you know, we, we have a meeting tomorrow, which I'm not allowed to go to because I called and complained to the ABC Board and everybody else about the restaurant. So I've been banned from the meeting. Meeting's being held at the restaurant. It should be held in a public place, should have been notified to the neighbors so that anybody could have gone that wanted to go. It's not happening. We have to do better. We have to work as a community. We did not have this problem when Luke's was there. Thank you.
Thank you. And as a reminder, we are not allowed to respond to the public comments at this time, but someone with the city will follow up. Thank you.
Charlene, Charlene Sam.
Everybody know where I live? Because I've been here before. Y'all know where I'm coming to talk about. These way with cats. Now, as you can see, maybe you can't, I'mma read it to you just in case. This email is dated from December 7, 2022. Good afternoon. Please see the attached brochure on some helpful information on living with cats and what to do to deter them from coming on your property. The city does not have an ordinance prohibiting cats from living freely outdoors. This is where they thrive. We do have a TNR or Trap Neuter Return Program where if you have feral cats in your neighborhood, you could trap them. And then, an officer would have them neutered and then return them to the same location. But it sounds like, in this case, they belong to your neighbor. So my recommendation would be to deter the cats. Just try, just, or be to deterrence to just try, try and keep them off of your property. If you would like for us to have an officer to speak to the owner and let them know that there is a concern, we could do that. I assume the cats live at 2371 Monroe Street. What was your name? What would your name and address be? After reading the attached brochure, let me know if you have any questions or if we may be of further assistance. Thank you. And as you can see, this comes from Animal Control. This is from the manager. Now, he's supposed to be over animals, but he can't do nothing. And he's saying it's y'all's fault. And if y'all wrote this ordinance up like this, then he right. It's y'all's fault. I want to know what y'all gonna do about these cats. 95.6% of their DNA comparable to a tiger. But y'all let it be loose with no restrictions, no restraints, 24/7, 365. Damage, that's billions of dollars. 50 billion. That's a lot of damage. They're the third destructive animal, only behind mosquitoes and rats. Now, on the 11th, I spent all this time, that's almost 9 hours, to turn this foreign cat. And that's just 1 of 6. When y'all gonna do something about this ordinance? And why y'all let these cat owners get away when not taking care of their pets? It's negligence.
Thank you.
Charlie Crapp.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, and Mr. Williams' staff. It's another nice day in Beaumont. Winter was in the air this morning. I had to get me a double layer out and some long pants. Anyway, in a solemn statement, Councilman Getz, I want to give my sincere condolences to you again and the Nathan family and the children for the loss of your wife, Allison. Allison Nathan Getz was a wonderful person, having served her community and the people of Jefferson County for many years. She will leave a legacy behind which few individuals will match. Councilman Getz, I want to stand with Israel. I want them to remain a free country. I am happy they are strong and defending themselves. The USA should send help to Israel so they remain a free, free country. It is very sad that innocent people have to die because of an ethical group that do not want a peaceful settlement. I would like to have the Palestinians find a way to get Hamas off of their, out of their midst and to live a peaceful life among the Jewish people. Consent agenda, item B. The city spends $81,884 a year to Software One. They mention in there, Microsoft Office 365 is their main objective, I think. But they do say they help them with their internet and other communications between departments. I guess I use Office 365 and I, I don't need Microsoft's support. But anyway, it may be a whole different ballgame. I, I attend the computer class at the Lakeside Center and they use 365. And that's going to be another item for later to talk about the service that they receive over there. But I enjoyed the good parking this afternoon at 5:30. And may all, y'all have a nice meeting and a good afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crapp.
Bye-bye.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Is there a motion and a second for the approval of the consent agenda?
To approve.
There's been a motion? And a second?
I will second if we can, if we can vote on C and D separately.
Let's get it approved and then we can. So it's been moved and seconded. I'm looking for our city attorney to correct what I'm getting wrong here.
So Councilman Neal is seconding under the condition that D, C, and D be voted on separately. So Councilman Felshaw would need to amend his motion to approve the consent agenda with the exceptions of C and D.
Yeah. I, I move to approve the consent agenda items, A, B, and E through K excluding C and D. Second.
It's been moved and seconded, approving of the consent and agenda, removing C and D. All those in favor, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, the motion is carried. We may, may we have the reading of item number? C.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, consider a resolution approving a contract for collection services for municipal court. And that's a recommendation of staff and staff has recommended approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval. Uh, any discussion?
Yes.
Start with Councilman Samuel, then Councilman Turner.
Yes, on that item, there were, as part of the consideration, it, I think it was 3 parts. And 1 part was the scope of the services and the other was the experience. And the third was a combination of the 2, I think. Is that? Yeah, that's what I'm looking for. Yeah, the scope of services, the demonstrated experience, and then the last being the cost of service with the cost effectiveness. I'd like to have some clearer understanding on item, the 2nd and 3rd. Well, all 3, with the scope of service as it regards to the RFP and then how that was scored as well as how the, the other 2 factors were scored.
Yeah, we're gonna ask Terry to come forth and talk about it.
On demonstrated experience, this, this process is an RFP. So what it was, what we did is we gave the proposals to a committee to score off these criteria. Demonstrated experience was part of the proposals that we were requested from each individual proposer. And that was provided within the proposal that we received. And so that was given to the committee to determine, you know, the, the score points that you see here up to 30. Same thing for cost of services and cost of effectiveness as well.
And that committee was made up of what, city employees?
Yes, sir. Generally, it's the department that's going to utilize the services that we're going out for request for proposal for.
So that would have been municipal court?
One was municipal court, yes, sir.
And, okay, and how many were a part of that?
There was 3 committee members.
Okay, and the criteria that was used, is it subjective criteria or objective criteria?
Subjective.
But it wasn't just municipal court that was in this, this board. We had a, we had a municipal court, we had, and there was 2 other departments in the city that also did. We didn't think it was fair that only municipal court did do the scope in the proposal. So we did have someone from 2 different departments doing this as well, so.
Can we say who was a member of that committee?
Yes, I mean, I can. Or you can talk. I can? Okay. Um, yes, I had brought in, well, I had asked Ms. Cheryl Ray, who is from accounting, because she does do the accounting side of things, and Mr. June Ellis, who has a lot of knowledge with this stuff, as well as myself, because I have had contact with 2 different collection services since being in, as the court administrator here in the city of Beaumont.
Last question, is there a time restraint on this? Does this need to be done today? Are there repercussions from if this is not done today?
I think we're, we're month to month right now.
We're month to month right now on the contract.
There's not an actual contract.
So we're trying to renew a contract and award to a new vendor.
I can speak so it can be properly recorded, too.
Yes, sir, we're month to month and we're trying to get a new contract put into place with a new vendor.
Okay, that's all I have.
Councilman Turner?
Can you kind of speak to the benefit of hiring this particular vendor over the vendor that we've kind of been working with?
Well, we scored them off the criteria. The benefit is going to be determined by the fact that, you know, they presented better than the other proposers. And so we're expecting that they're going to do a better job, just accordingly, just like we would any other RFP as what was presented to us within their proposals and their experiences with those, if we have any. Some of them, we don't have any experience with.
Mr. Williams, if we, if we can, I'm kind of looking for more specifics. Like, I don't feel like we're really speci- when I say the benefit, I want to know specifically, you know, what's the difference? Because I mean, we're making a decision. I just want to know specifics.
Well, I think they listed some, some objective criteria which they used to score these on. And then took the scores based upon that. So if, if the committee wants to talk about that criteria, the things that you scored them on, I think council will be glad to hear that. June, you, you on that committee too, so we need you to jump in there and talk about the process on how you arrived at the decision that you arrived at.
Did I miss something? I, I didn't see the, other than this graph, I didn't see any other information about the criteria being, that they went by.
Yeah, I just see, yeah, I just see the graph. I don't see specifics in this proposal.
Well, we typically don't include the criteria with RFP. We just give you the points after the staff reviews the submissions.
So previously, council requested that staff not include in their reports the attachments, the request for proposal documents can sometimes range from a couple of pages to several hundred documents. And so what council in the past has requested is that we just give you the compilation table. If council is now requesting that we submit the entire proposal from all the individuals that submitted a request for proposal, then staff can accumulate those documents, but just be mindful that some of them are quite lengthy.
Yeah, just to chime in, there were 8 proposals. Some of those proposals were very detailed. Some were not as detailed. Actually, took all of those proposals home and over the course of a few hours, went through all 8 of the proposals. The top 3 scores were very close. Many of them can, can do the job. But objectively, I looked at what was included in the proposals and, and made my score and submitted that to the purchasing department. Those scores were made independently of the other 2 members. I don't know what their score was. They don't know what my score was. But, but I, I made sure that, that my score and my analysis of, of each one was, was objective. But, but I, I, I made sure that, that my score and my analysis of, of each one was, was objective and based on who I thought could do the, the better job.
Councilman Getz.
So I, I keep hearing how we used a matrix for scoring and that the current vendor came up short, that there is another vendor being proposed that we feel could do a better job. But I'm not hearing. Thank you. But I'm not hearing, as Councilmember Turner said, any specifics. And that is a concern to me because my understanding is that the Linebarger firm, which is the current vendor, has been doing a very good job. And in fact, the only complaint I've ever heard voiced had something to do with an inability to provide death certificates. When, let, let's back up a second. What they're there to do is to collect outstanding municipal fines. And obviously, if someone has died, it impacts the court's ability to collect that money. And it would be nice if the court knows that there's a decedent out there. And it would be nice if they could get a death certificate to show that. Great. But by state law, Linebarger can't request a death certificate, only a family member or relative can. So what Linebarger does instead is they will provide an obituary that they can't provide a death certificate. So if there's other issues out there that counsel needs to be aware of and factoring in why this, this recommendation is being made, I'd like to hear about it too.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. If you go back and look at a little history, before we had our current collection agency, we had one that we were very happy with that was doing a fine job. And objectively, they charged the same, so there's, none of that fits in. But their service was better and part of that was that, it wasn't just death certificates. What it was, was running multiple databases, searching deaths, getting obituaries, verifying and comparing to birth dates and stuff like that, which is, if you're from southeast Texas or Louisiana, it's called a line yacht. You get a little extra for your money. And it's a, it's an important thing because of the volume of cases we have to be able to take care of some of these and go from that standpoint. Our previous firm is 60 years plus in Texas, they're Texas only. The current one serves the whole country, sometimes bigger is not better. And there was nothing, if, if you remember before, there was nothing wrong with the firm we had before. Everybody that actually used the firm within this court was happy with it, with the customer relationship. So that was a big part of, it worked really well, we got what we needed timely. And it was just, we felt, we spoke out against changing it last time because of the reasons that there was no, no compelling reason to change out what was working. And we're happy to go back and work with the same folks we started with.
Well, Judge, does the previous firm have an office in Beaumont? Because Linebarger does.
There is a firm in Beaumont, but that firm and that, that person that's there does not, he, that is not a court. They don't deal with court, they deal with the taxes. So that was one of the statements last time, because I was not the court administrator at the time, but I was sitting here next to the court administrator when we were forced to switch. And that was the big thing, well, there's someone in Beaumont. However, the person that we deal with, other than once a month, are there in Houston, Houston. So that, the, the, them being here in Beaumont, that's not actually, they're not our court representative. They are just kind of a face that are here. They, they actually did the tax stuff for us here. Kind of like today, MBBA is sitting here in this, as well as Linebarger, they're both here right now. They're from Austin, but they're still here. It does not deter them because they're four hours away or they're 30 minutes away. I don't see the representative from Beaumont, but once a month when they bring me a report, that's it. So, like I said, I was not the court administrator when we were, had to switch last time. Cheryl Reese was, but I was here as the deputy court administrator. And we had no issues with MBBA. With the newer, the one we have right now, there has been issues with getting reports on time. It took us a while to get that together, as well as the death certificates. I know you don't think that's a big deal, Mr. Getz, but it really is when you have the volume we have here in the court. And the, they do, a person manually skip traces that stuff, as well as they have programs. They call, they ask for death certificates on behalf of the families, do that for us. We would get tons of them, tons. And then where I've got maybe, I can say 20 in the last three years. So I understand that the, the argument has been that she or the representative isn't here in Beaumont, but she does not, it's not with court.
Councilman Turner?
Was anything to do with death certificates or was that in the RFP specifically?
He didn't see.
I haven't seen it.
He, he was not involved.
But-
I'll help with that. That, that specific issue was really, was something that Councilman Getz pointed out as it relates to a concern or a complaint that had against the, the current vendor. The RFP deals with services they provide. And what the judge was trying to explain is that having those death certificate or having some type of form to certify that that individual is, in fact deceased, allows us to write off that debt and to clear that debt off the books per the statute. And so I, I don't want counsel to be confused, like, the RFP deals with services, fees and, and things that they provide. Providing a death certificate or providing proof that an individual is deceased or incarcerated. It's just a service in order to write off a debt.
The reason I'm asking, it seems like that particular service is a big deciding factor. And what I'm listening to right now, that's why I asked if, if that was the case, was that something mentioned?
I don't want to, like, speak for Bree or, or our deputy court administrator, but I think what she's trying to express is that previously, they had a relationship with the, the vendor that's being proposed today. And that was the preferred vendor at the time. And there was some decision to change back to our, our current vendor based on a local office being present here. And I, I, I think we give, obviously give precedence to local vendors. And, and they, they get, I guess, a credit or scoring points for that. But what I believe what she's trying to express to counsel is that that shouldn't be a primary or a huge determining factor because that, that office focuses more on tax than it does with her, her concern as collection from municipal court. And so Councilman, I'm sorry, Councilman Samuel had asked earlier, was the scoring objectively or subjectively? I think for some of our newer staff members, like ACM Ellis and Ms. Cheryl Ray are comptroller, those are more objective because they probably haven't worked with them in that capacity before. However, Bree as a deputy court administrator, currently, previously and now as administrator, has worked with both companies. And so she might have had a previous working relationship or understanding of how that working relationship works. So her grading scale, her potential could have been more subjective in the sense that she says, I have a better working relationship or I know that this company performs better for the things that I want and the things that I need for my court. So I think that there's a lot of considerations for counsel to consider based on both how the scoring related, but also based on what staff is providing you today.
Mayor. Councilman Fellshaw, then Councilman Durio.
I, I don't, can you answer, how long have we been with the current vendor?
Three years.
Three? How long were we with the previous vendor?
A, a little over, I think it was more than three years. I think we, we went-
Typically, and I'll help, typically the RFP is, the contracts are for three years, but we always have an option to renew if it's renewed within that time period. So this, the, the contract went out for renewal or the contract expired and the city has an opportunity to go back out to see if there's either a better price available or, you know, someone else who can provide better services.
But I was under the impression we were with the previous vendor for more than three years.
It was three years and I think we've been on month to month since June.
Okay. You know,
With the current vendor.
You know, we, we come in here as a counsel and we, we try to look at this information in a moment and make a snap decision. It's almost like looking at something through a straw, limited information, and so it feels that way. Are you, as a staff, are y'all recommending that we make this change? Because you're the ones in the trenches every day dealing with this issue.
And that's something I'm, I really do thank you for asking, because that was not something that was asked last time. We were, like I said, we were forced to move to something else which we were okay with, we had used them before. We didn't want the change, but we did do the change. And thankfully, I was able to see it for the last three, three and a half years. And I did get to see our previous vendor before that. I just recommend who is in front of y'all now that y'all have. Especially being the court administrator, I'm the main one that deals with collections. I provide the reports to city manager, I'm the one that runs the reports, as well as my deputy court administrator. I'm the one that speaks to them, emails them, talks to them and just customer service alone, it's, it's totally different. So, thank you.
Councilman Durio?
Yes. So on the, are you recommending the vendor that we go with, is that the one that you had before the pre- this one? Okay, did you get the previous vendors, not Linebarger, but the other one, what their collection rate is now?
I do not have that information with me, I don't know if they have it with them here.
Was the, was the, the group that did this, were they able to look at it? Were you, were y'all able to look at their collection rate?
Uh, yeah, I think it was in the RFPs, yes.
It was?
Yeah, I don't have it with me at this moment. She does have, if you can see, these are the amount of RFPs we did go through with all of the eight of them. So yes, it is in there, but I don't have it in front of me at the moment.
Say, did y'all communicate it to the Lineburgers that, that y'all weren't happy and, and say that y'all, they needed to improve or some things they needed to do to improve?
Yes, Mr. Durio, we have. In the beginning, we did speak about the reports coming in faster, we found a way to resolve that. We definitely did that after a while, it took a while to get there. And the death certificates have been preached about multiple times. I, like I said, I have not received barely any where, previously with the last vendor that we did have, that would be a daily, something daily we would get, other than maybe once every three months or so.
Okay, also, did the committee take into effect, or were they graded on having the work that they've done for the last three years and, and you, you guys' experience with working with them?
The committee I didn't speak to about my, what I, my personal opinions on them with who I have now and previously. That's why when they asked me, Mr. Terry asked me to get a board together, whatever, I didn't ask the judge to do it with me, I didn't ask my deputy court administrator to do it with me. Because the last time I did do, the deputy court administrator, the court administrator, and I think one more, I think maybe Todd Semino was on that board of directors. And so this time I tried to kind of branch out with different knowledge of Cheryl Ray doing accounting, June having knowledge just within the city and so, and then mine with the personal experience that I've had for the last eight and a half years I've been here.
And Councilman Durio, just so you understand, it was an independent grade. So the committee didn't meet to discuss their, their grade and their finding, they graded independently. And then, and- Yeah, so we're ca- yeah, yeah, we're calling it a committee, but they, they didn't actually meet to kind of discuss the, the applicants. They reviewed the packets independently, submitted their rates for, and then it went to purchasing. And basically Terry just cap, added them up and provided a score based on the culmination of the individuals.
I still have not seen anyone's scores either, or even the combined ones, so.
What, what the, what is, how do the collection rates compare?
I'd have to go through them all. It's been a while since we did this, I'd have to go through them all. But that was part of what we did with our scope of services and the demonstrated experience and why we graded them the way that we did. Was based on, you know, their collection rates, it was based on their experience throughout the state, all the different people that they've done work for. Lots of different factors that went into grading that. And we, we read through all of these to do that.
Okay, Mayor.
Councilman Samuel?
Well, I normally, as you know, normally I, I lean very heavily on staff and what the recommendation is. The only thing about this is I, I really would like to know the difference in the collection rates. Because that's what's most important to, to us, or to me, that is, what the collection rates are. If, and that is key in determining whether this other factor of them having a local presence even matters. Because if the old firm had better collection rates, substantially better collection rates, and that would mean something to me. So I, I, I think that's key.
They haven't had a reservation here tonight. Well, the rates would have been considered in your cost effectiveness and that would have been how they were scored within that as they looked at everyone. So if you looked at this, I'm sorry, if you look at the scores where the cost affected, the committee would have taken that into account, where McCree would have been part of 30?
All of them are 30.
Right, so it would have been level, but then everything else they would have considered would have been also determined within their scale.
But I'm wondering, how could they all be 30 when only two of them have done collections for the city of Beaumont?
It depends on what their proposal, which is the number that would be within the proposals and what they looked at.
And it's also related to cost of, of service, you know?
Service is what?
And, and the percentage is, is set at 30%. That's what they can collect, so. Yeah, that's the statute, so.
Well, it was my understanding that it's a sta- it's a, the, the cost is all across because it's 30% of whatever is collected, am I correct? So that's not the issue. So the cost of services, I, I, you know, I understand. But I'm talking about the percentage of collections, that, that is the key component to me. And that's not something I'm able to see here.
And, and I don't, I don't believe that data was in there from the prior vendor in the, I don't think that was a question of what was your collection rate prior. I, I don't recall that, it's, as Ms. Ray mentioned, it's been a while, but.
Well, I know while I've been here, that has always been an issue, that we wanted the collection rates. Am I correct? Yeah, that's always been the issue, that's what we, we hired them for, is to get the collection rates up.
Councilman, all right, we've got Councilman Durio, we've got Councilman, uh,
I'm real fast.
Yes.
Neal, O'Neill, and then Getz.
For myself, when we talk about collection rates, I'm not talking about from the last time they worked for the city of Beaumont. Well, that could be included, but I want to know for the same period of time that the current vendor was working for us and what kind of work they may have done in other cities. Like, I guess the last three years, that's, that's what I want to see. What the, whichever firm y'all are recommending, what have they done in the last three years compared to the Linebarger firm?
But we do, and when we, when we do this, if we, if this is what we go towards to get that data for you, we do have to realize that MBBA is Texas only, where you have a Linebarger that is, you know, all, all over. So, I mean, we would have to get that, but at the same time, I can get the data of what their collection rate was for us at that point compared to it is now, because I have every single record I have in the last nine, eight and a half years. So I have every single invoice I've ever sent MBBA Linebarger while I've been here.
Okay, Councilman Neal?
I think that kind of answered my question, it doesn't sound like you have the data. I mean, at the end of the day, what we're trying to figure out is, has Linebarger collected more money from us than this previous firm?
Actually, before I was coming here, I, I kind of put a spreadsheet together just from my knowledge before I came in here, so I wasn't blindsided. And year totals on, from 2016 till now, and it was basically the same all the way across. But I, I didn't bring that, but I will, I will absolutely do what I need to do in order to get where we need to be.
Councilman Getz?
So it looks to me like we do need to have the benefit of some more information. And in lieu of that, since we're on a month to month contract and we can extend that until we do have the information that we need to make a good decision for the city. I, I'd like to move that we tabled this, you know, for a month so that we can give you the opportunity to provide that data and get it to the council members and let us reflect on that and come back and make a good decision. and get it to the council members and let us reflect on that and come back and make a good decision.
There's been a motion to table. It's been seconded. Any discussion on tabling it?
Yeah, I just had one more.
Okay, and then Councilman Duryo as well. Councilman Turner first.
Just, just, I'm asking out of ignorance, so I have a better understanding. When we look at collections, do we normally give firms data to compare? Or they can have goals to see if they can collect or maybe get more revenue than maybe the previous firm? Or we, we kind of keep all that confidential? Okay, thank you.
I know when, that's not a part of the packet.
No, that's what I said, I'm asking out of ignorance because I read the, no, yeah.
Because I think on their statements, it states that it is confidential. You cannot send that out.
Got you.
I know that our vendor now, I was not, it, it states, but I get a report every month and it says on there, you cannot send this to anyone.
Okay, that's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Uh, just, just one statement. I've heard more than one of y'all say more than once. Basically, they were the same, basically they were equal. And I'm trying to figure out if they were and why are the scores so different?
Again, my scores were, um, I've, I've dealt with them. I've, I've worked with both vendors. June and Cheryl haven't. The judge has been with us through both vendors as well when he's requested things, been night and day. Again, I mean, I can't change it all's mind, but I would hope that, you know, as a staff member, especially standing here that's dealing with them every single day or dealing with collections, they both get thirty percent, no matter what. But there's just different factors that, I mean, make us.
What are those factors?
Well, your customer service for one is totally different. And if they're you giving me a customer service a certain way, then they're doing that to our defendants in our city. So that's one for sure.
You're saying that LineBurger didn't provide good customer service?
I'm not saying that at all. I'm just not saying that it, I, there was, there's room for improvement. I will, I'll, I'll say that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of tabling this signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries and we'll table this for thirty days. Thank y'all. Appreciate all the time up at the podium answering all the questions.
I, I, I would like to say again, uh, I, huh?
I'm going to remind y'all, when y'all speak and you adjust the mic, it causes feedback. And so we don't get an accurate recording of what you're saying. So try not to speak while you're adjusting the mic so that everyone can hear you and it can be accurately recorded. You and Councilman Gatz have that really bad.
Thank you, Ms. City Attorney.
Did you say I'm really bad?
You're really bad at that. Y'all both adjust the mic while y'all speak.
Well, I think, uh, the part of, oh.
You're not as, you're not as bad.
I don't touch mine, so I'm good.
Okay, I, I'd just like to say, you know, I, I, I do value the input from staff and I value your opinions because you're doing this every day when I'm somewhere else doing something else. So I appreciate that. But there are times that I think it's important that certain things come out and I just needed a little bit more information, so thank you.
All right, Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item D.
Council consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an earnest money contract and other related documents to purchase two tracts of property from Mount Gilead Missionary Baptist Church. And comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Have a motion on item number D.
Move to approve, second.
Been moved by Councilman Fellshaw, seconded by Councilman Duryo. Any discussion? Yes, Councilman Neil.
What are we buying this property for?
We have a project in the five-year CIP to improve sludge removal at the water production plant. So currently, that, when we remove the solids out of the water, that's put down the sanitary sewer system and it goes to our sewer treatment plant. The problem is that the type of material that goes in there tends to solidify and causes problems with, with line stoppages. So that's the purpose of the project. If we have to, in the engineering of that, if we have to go to centrifuges, we're extremely limited on space that's close to those clarifying basins. And this property, it's, the church itself is for sale with the parking lots, but this is empty land that's next to the church right across from the clarifying basin. So it's a nice half acre or so that would give us the ability to put that centrifuge process on if, if required for the sludge removal.
All right, thank you.
Yes, Councilman Duryo.
Bart, it won't have interfere in any way with that cemetery that's right there next to the church?
No, sir, it's, it's down a bit from, from that. So it has Mount Gilead and then it's got that white Clapburg church, but then there's empty lot, half, half acre.
Councilman Gatz.
I certainly can understand how putting sludge in the sewer system could be a problem, but explain a little bit further the centrifuge process and the difference between just putting it in the.
If you go to, if you go to dispose of that, you have to get the water out of it. So, so you spin it to, to get the water out of it, to dry it. You've got two choices. Well, you've got a couple of different choices. You, you can spin it, you can belt press it, you can lay it out in drying beds and just let it dry naturally. But, and we not, we don't know yet that we'll definitely have to go to centrifuges, but the opportunity is available now with the property for sale to grab it as it's an empty lot. And like I said, we're very tight on that water plant property. So it gives us a, an option that, for that sludge removal.
Well, so are you recommending buying this without even knowing if we're going to use a centrifuge process or?
Yes, because it allows us more flexibility in the long-term operation of the plant because it gives us more space and it's right there across the road.
Is that across the road between the cemetery and that white church?
It's across pine from the existing water production plant.
So next on the church side?
It's on the church side.
Between?
Between, I believe it's between the parking lot and that, and that wood building, if I'm not mistaken, or right next to the wood building. I, I'd have to bring it up to be sure.
So would you have to construct a pipeline to get the sludge?
Yeah, that's right. Right next to the, the white frame wooden building between that and the cemetery. You'd have to pipe it across the road, right, under pine.
Councilman Gatz. All right, that's, that would answer your question. Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving item number D, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number one?
Council consider a resolution approving the purchase of Axon Taser Energy Weapons and Accessories from Axon Enterprise, Inc. of Scottsdale, Arizona, for use by the police department. And it comes with approval of the resolution to be funded out of police contract services budget.
Is there a motion for item number one?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of approval of item number one, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number two, please?
Council consider a resolution authorizing a contract with C-Tex Construction Corp. of Beaumont for the citywide emergency water main repairs three. And it comes with approval of the resolution, recommendation of approval to be funded out of Water Utilities Fund.
Is there a motion for item number two?
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval for item number two. Any discussion? Councilman Neil. Councilman Turner next.
Manager, are we done doing emergency repairs?
No, we're still doing them. We still have over two hundred leaks out there. And, and in speaking with Mike and talking, a normal amount of leaks is below forty. So we're still have a large amount of emergency repairs to do. And we have approximately three hundred dress-up projects to do. So we and staff thought it was good for, we go ahead and get a contractor to work because we still have a large number, although it's drastically reduced on the amount of new leaks we're getting. To be able to provide the service and customer services that we should as a city, we, we need to get those numbers down.
So is this one being tracked pretty close? Because I know this is only a hundred thousand dollar contract with one option to renew.
I missed the first part of your question, Councilman.
I'm assuming somebody's tracking the cost on this pretty close because it's only a hundred thousand dollar contract with one option to renew.
So, so far, C-Tex was the first one that we bid out emergency repairs under and it was a not-to- exceed hundred thousand dollar contract and it was based upon hours worked. That contract closed out at ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars, which is why we're bringing it back to council. However, we're bringing it back with the same framework that we awarded to the two other contractors we have working, which is a fixed bid per size of line leak. So they'll be paid their, their set amount per leak fixed rather than just the hours that, that they worked. But we are tracking it. The total expended on all emergency repairs to date is just the ninety-nine thousand, nine ninety. We have yet to do a pay order to either of the other two or C-Tex under this one.
Councilman Duryo, then Councilman Turner.
Oh Bart, for the public, could you, because I, I see the emails on this today. Can you just explain exactly what dress-up means?
Basically, to put it back to the way it was before we went in there and tore it out. So if it's a sidewalk, a road, or a driveway, then we have to saw cut and, and repair the base and then put the concrete or asphalt back. If it's a yard, then we fill the hole and then end up in the end eventually after it settles a bit, putting sod back. If we have to tear out a fence, it may be putting the fence back, so.
Cool, all right. So is, is that what a, the citizen that was up earlier spoke about? Is that something like that?
Yes, sir. It's, it's, and to the city manager's point, we were, we were stressing fixing the water leaks. We had to stop the water from leaking. So Mike Harris, who's, who's here and can speak to it if need be, but he.
So just what I'm trying to get at is first they fix the water leak, then they go back and do the dress-up?
Absolutely, and normally we run two dress-up crews. But in the height of the drought and the, the leaks coming in at such a fast pace, Mike repurposed the dress-up crews to doing water repairs. So we were, we were purposefully not dealing as much with the dress-up to emphasize getting the water leak stopped.
So when he's, uh, the manager's say we still have over two hundred leaks, that's, that's just leaks that need to be repaired? That doesn't include the dress-ups?
That doesn't include the dress-ups and we're actually a little lower. The report as of end of day today was a hundred and four outstanding leaks and three hundred and twenty-six dress-ups pending.
Thank you.
Councilman Turner.
Bart, or Mr. Williams, based upon kind of the complaint today and some of the calls and emails I've been getting, when it comes to dress-ups, how are we communicating it with the citizens that actually are, have to kind of look at the aftermath of, after we fixed the work? And I know we're anticipating the dress-ups are delayed, but how are we communicating it to the citizens?
Well, in the case of the citizen that came today, Streets and Drainage had gone out there and he had talked to the street superintendent, but he was unhappy with the proposed repair was, was what had happened there. And so he was looking for further conversation. But we have put out press releases and social media, et cetera, explaining that we have postponed the, the dress-ups. I'm not sure. What's that? Oh, for, oh, okay. Yeah, Mr. Boone pointed out that there was something out on Facebook two hours ago talking about dress-ups and, and where we were addressing them as a city. Now, I know we put door tags out. I'm not sure if we communicate directly on dress-ups, Mike, did?
Okay, so I'm going to ask you to come to the mic so it can be properly recorded for the meeting, please, and thank you.
And I'm not dodging it, but Mike lives this every day. The dress-ups are really what he does, except the concrete is which is streets.
If the homeowner is home, we do express to the homeowner that we will return at a later date to do the dress-up. So we do try to get that out to the homeowners.
Yeah, my, my follow-up was, is it, I know you said you have door tags. On the door tags when they're not present, do we kind of address that in the door tags or currently we don't do that?
Currently, we usually don't hang a door tag unless it's, you know, it's a really big mess and we do want the homeowner to know that we will be back. Like I said, a lot of the stuff, small holes, we, like I said, we do set the, the dirt, the excess dirt to the side. Certain cases, like Mr. Lucenta, we did pull up a section of the driveway, set it off to the side and made our repair. And then once we do that, we do contact Streets and Drainage for them to come back and address the concrete. And then we do have crews, like I said, come back and do pick up the dirt. As what Bart was saying during the height of our drought, we pretty much had every crew fixing leaks. Probably about the last two weeks, we've had the dress-up crews return back to fixing dress-ups. They dropped the numbers, then the numbers climbed. The thing you got to remember is as we fix leaks, we make holes and when we make holes, that makes dress-ups. So like I said, once the dress-up or the leaks slow down to bare minimum, then we can really drop the numbers on dress-up, so.
So what we're hearing is the reason for the request for the subcontractor, the extension is it will also help us with getting more of the.
Big numbers down, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And Streets and Drainage does talk to the property owners before we go in and fix concrete on their property. So they always make contact.
I have a question on that, Mayor.
Councilman Neil, then Councilman Duryo.
The gentleman that talked earlier, talking about on the driveway where the apron was cut all the way across at the driveway. I do hope that if we do something like that, we are replacing the whole apron for these citizens. Because that's not acceptable.
Yeah, they, they in fact didn't cut anything away from the driveway as a whole. What he's talking about is there's an expansion joint between the first panel that connects to the street and the next panel. And the crew checked to make sure if there were any dowels between the two panels, which there were not. There was nothing cut away.
All right, thank you. Councilman Duryo.
Um, I guess if we're not in a drought and you have leaks, do you usually fix, do a dress-up right after you fix the leaks? Or do you have to wait?
Usually on our dress-up, it usually runs about two weeks.
Two weeks?
Yes, we try to make sure we get everything caught within two weeks of after the leak's repaired. There are occasions where we've had to go back where one slipped through the cracks. But however, like I said, we do try to, to maintain a two-week, no more than a two-week window. Now, what we are doing on the dress-ups now, because there's such a large number of them, the dress-up crews have, like I said, started back doing dress-up. We've actually went back to the oldest dress-ups and working our way down the list from the oldest to the most current. That way, you know, I don't want a citizen that we've dug up their yard two months ago, you know, to continue to wait to have their yard dressed up. Why, you know, one we did last week, fixed and perfectly fine, so.
Thank you, Mike.
We've also done that in streets. We've dated them, we're working the oldest to the newest.
Well, and I want to commend y'all on the job that you've done. This, you know, even though it's, people get frustrated, there's been a lot of work to do and y'all have been working seven days a week and we appreciate the efforts and all the employees.
Thank you.
Doing that work.
Thank you.
I would like to state one more thing with the city manager's approval. We, we got out of stage one voluntary drought restrictions. That was announced this afternoon before council. So we're, while we're still in an exceptional drought and we still need rain for sure, we've gotten the leaks down enough and the pump rate reduced enough to where we can get out of the drought restrictions.
Thank you. All those in favor of approving item number two, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. And we have the reading of item number three, Mr. City Manager.
Council approve a resolution for the immediate repair of an excavator utilized by solid waste. And it comes with approval of rec, recommendation of approval to be funded out of the Fleet Management Fund.
Is there a motion for item number three?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for item number three. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by, all those in favor of item number three, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager? Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number four?
Thank you, Mayor. Council consider a request for an amended specific use permit to allow a residential care facility in the RM dash H, Residential Multiple Family Highest Density District for property located at ten ninety-four through ten ninety-eight Cottonwood Street. And it comes with the recommendation of approval, uh, by the P and Z Commission on a six one vote with the following conditions. Construction plans shall comply with all applicable building and fire code requirements. Construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for water and sanitary sewer services, including any requirements of the city's backflow pre-treatment and our fog program. And three, sanitary sewer lines should be tied to the sitting line located in the alleyway, alleyway or two Cottonwood Street. And four, the existing water meter located in the proposed driveway along Cable Avenue must be moved or abandoned. And that comes with the recommendation of approval with those conditions.
Okay, is there a motion for item number four?
Move with four conditions. You can have it, I'll second it.
Move to approve the amended specific use permit with the conditions.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second for approval for item number four, any discussion? Councilman Gatz?
I just want to say that before I, uh, became chair of the Mayor's Homeless Coalition, I did not know Dan Janice or the work that HOW facility does. And it's certainly a fact that a lot of our homeless population have substance abuse problems. Mr. Janice and his organization does a tremendous job of helping these individuals that won't help fight their addictions and find work. Uh, he provides a safe place for them to live and place for them to eat while they're working through this, has a tremendous success rate. And I just compliment him on every aspect of what he's doing.
Thank you, Councilman Gatz, Councilman Samuel.
Yes, I'd just like to also commend Hal on the way that you operate. I've been watching you for, uh, many years and, um, it's been years since I've had complaints. That was complaints maybe fifteen years ago, uh, about the walking around. But, um, since that time, I've not had any complaints and I didn't hear any complaints at the planning and zoning, uh, meeting that day. Am I correct? And I do like the fact that you all have kind of reconsidered as opposed to going with two stories. Uh, you're staying with the one story, so that, I think that's, uh, that's more amenable to the citizens around. But you've been, uh, good for the community, uh, not only for helping with the homeless, drug addiction, uh, but also just, um, uh, being there and the way you run the program, so thank you very much.
Councilman, I mean.
Just did want to point out real quick, at the hearing, there were a couple neighbors in opposition, but I would just remind the council that this is, uh, an expansion of a longstanding facility.
All those in favor of approving item number four, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, the motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number five?
Council consider a request for a specific use permit to allow multifamily development in the CBD Central Business District for property located at seven oh four Nature Street. And it was, uh, approved by, uh, P and Z on a seven oh vote with the, uh, following conditions. Construction plans shall comply with all applicable building engineering and fire code requirements. And two, construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for water and sanitary sewer services, including any requirements of the city's backflow pre-treatment and our fog program.
Is there a motion for item number five?
So move to approve.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded for approval for item number five, any discussion? Councilman Turner?
Mr. Williams, uh, well, I see Mr. Boone is talking, can anybody confirm that this location is downtown?
Yes, sir. It's, uh, adjacent, it's on Nature Street, adjacent to, um, the restaurants there.
Okay, it's just good to see, you know, potential residential downtown, so that's just what I wanted to point out.
All those in favor of approving item number five, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, the motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number six?
Council consider a request for the closure of access to Interstate ten east feeder road from eighth and ninth street. And it comes with the recommendation of approval of the ordinance.
Is there a motion for item number six?
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval of item number six, any discussion? Councilman Turner, Councilman Gatz, Councilman Durio?
For staff states, do we ever talk to Tex dot about the kind of effect that it would be on the community when we close down these traffics or do these exits? Because I'm, I know I've seen quite a few wrecks on some of them, do we ever discuss that prior to?
In, in this case, uh, Tex dot worked with us, we had a, um, public meeting over at the Lakeside Center. They did it out, a lot of outreach to the neighborhood that's immediately affected by these closures, brought them in, did a presentation. We had invited council as well. I, I forget who all showed up, I know several of you did. So they did a really good job explaining what the options were. The big thing that was a factor on these closures was that the I-ten work called for putting a sound barrier up to help with noise off the freeway for this neighborhood. But because of the way that the structure of the feeder road and everything is, to put that sound wall up, you had to close these two streets. So the neighbors were able to hear what the logic of that was and they agreed that they, they preferred the, the sound wall. I think it's a good safety improvement as well because the on-ramps and exits are gonna change with the I-ten freeway. So right now, there's a road that's very, very close to the feeder roads, almost simultaneous. I mean, you could just drive over the curb onto it. And right now, it's not as big a deal because there's an on-ramp there. But in the changed design, there's going to be an off-ramp that comes down towards that neighborhood. So with that sound wall barrier there, it's gonna be much, much safer than not having it and just having that traffic exit at speed right next to those houses that are on the side of the road. But yes, Tex dot did a lot of outreach on this, I have to commend them, um, they worked with us. And I think we did a pretty good job, um, with them trying to get the word out on this.
Councilman Gatz?
I'd like to hear what the neighbors' thoughts were on this, because right now, um, you know, you stand in your front yard and you look out over the freeway and, you know, it's, it is what it is. But, uh, I'm not sure that that isn't more preferable to than looking out at a concrete wall. Uh, what, what are the neighbors saying about it?
They, they did the public hearing and invited them in. They also, uh, did, uh, some type of, of mailing to all of the people in the neighborhood and took a vote of, of what they wanted to do. And the feedback back was they wanted the, the sound wall.
Yeah, let me just echo what Mr. Barkoviac was saying. I guess Tex dot, as Bart had mentioned, on May eighteenth held a hearing. And this is a letter from, um, our district engineer, Mr. Gonzalez. And he said, as part of that, uh, hearing, um, and I'll go ahead and read it. Let's see, a survey was also sent out to the property owners to facilitate input. Uh, the results from both the public meeting and the survey concluded that residents were in favor of the sound raw, wall and the closing of eighth and ninth street frontage road access.
Councilman Durio?
Yeah, is this closing gonna be temporary just while there are construction, a wall, or it's gonna be permanent?
Permanent.
And this wall, is it like the one, uh, I guess right past Delaware on sixty-nine?
I believe so.
Okay, and just for that, uh, I live about a half a mile from Interstate ten and it's a football stadium between my house and the highway and I could still hear the traffic going by. These folks live right next door, I mean, what, a block from Interstate ten? So I'm, I'm pretty sure this is gonna, gonna help with some of the, uh, noise from the highway.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a timeframe, how long is it gonna take?
They're supposed to let, um, June, yeah, so, four to five years.
Well, they're not gonna close it until they get ready to do it, correct?
So, yeah, what their representative said is they're, um, again, four to five year project. The contractor could install the walls, you know, sooner in that timeline, but, you know, we just don't know at this point.
They'll shut it down now to cause confusion for the next four years.
In words of Tex dot, progress takes time.
Let's bring it home. All right, uh, all in favor of approving item number six, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, will you take us into the public hearing?
Yes, Mayor. Council to conduct the public hearing to receive comments regarding the city's emergency management plan and. And we have, uh, Mr. Tim Ocknercheck here tonight and with, uh, Shakan and Nobus, the emergency and assistant emergency coordinator here with a presentation.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor and Council. We, uh, have a annual public hearing required, next slide. We're compliant with the state, um, several laws, particularly Government Code four eighteen, which requires an annual hearing. Our city adopted, uh, the rules in two thousand eight. And so, next slide, we've got a number of annexes that we have posted on our website. They require routine updates and they're basically representative of a hazard analysis. It's in the basic plan. And, uh, that way we can have somewhat of an all hazard plan where we, uh, try to focus on the biggest, um, threats, uh, to our, our local area that may be different, you know, here than other places in the country. Next slide. A number of things we're still working on and all these things are in coordination with other, uh, city departments. There's quite a few, uh, disasters. Usually the big ones take ten to eleven years to close out, so we're, um, almost six years, I guess, into Harvey. And we're still, we have a ways to go. And so, um, all these, we're working with FEMA, the state, on, uh, processing those. We routinely have incidents, both major events and hazardous material spills that we, uh, process as well. Some of the, uh, major events coming up are posted up there. That is a growing list and we're just trying to make sure we're prepared for contingency plans and so forth when these events occur. Next slide. A lot of training is done, uh, for those of y'all that have seen the Emergency Management Operations Center and, uh, some of the expansions we've done on the third floor. There's additional training rooms, there quite often, we'll see every room up there with something in it. Trying to keep up with both required training, uh, updates, um, making sure people know how to do their job. Uh, workshops, taking information from different groups, whether it's, uh, strategic planning or, um, specific, uh, like hazard mitigation and so forth, uh, specific plans that need updates. And then obviously, we try to use any events or incidents that happen to, uh, look at lessons learned and, and benefit our, our program for future. And we make those, uh, changes immediately if we can, next slide. We, uh, continue to have a lot of focus on mask care, um, that, that's a big, uh, thing, active shooter events and, and, um, incidents that have quite a few injuries or fatalities. We're trying to make sure that we have everything in place to handle, uh, the process and, um, the responders know what they're doing and are constantly trained. The new, uh, legislative, uh, session, or the, the most recent one mandated, uh, sixteen hours for all police officers over the next two years for active shooters. So a lot of the plans that we're doing are focused on, uh, integrating with the, uh, training requirements. Next slide. The hazard mitigation plan was, uh, the five-year update was approved earlier this year. And we generally do a, an annual update. One of the big changes that we've had this year deals with the drought and how much, uh, damage has been caused by this. Uh, sometimes it's, it's amazing how much something like cold impacts. Not, it's not always just wind from a hurricane, but there, there's different, uh, we have to look at all threats and try to keep the mitigation plan up to date. Priorities change, projects change, and our goal is to make sure that that, uh, annual update goes in. And we're working on that one right now, next slide. Quite a few grants going on, y'all have heard, uh, and been to quite a few workshops and, and sessions, uh, on the Real Time Crime Center, trying to expand, uh, use of the technology and a, a more strategic approach, trying to, um, stretch our manpower and, uh, um, you know, enhance public safety overall. We got quite a few programs going, trying to get funding for, uh, everything from training to plans to equipment and, uh, um, mitigation activities. I, I saw a, uh, a grant come through. We have a kickoff meeting, I think either later this week or next week, on, on yet another, uh, mitigation project. So there's, there's constantly stuff working that we try to, uh, take advantage of to improve our city infrastructure, next slide. Some of the training we're doing, um, integrating with a regional approach, both having people to train locally and using state and federal resources, um, local agencies. And, uh, like the State HS Chiefs Association to help stretch our training dollars and get that in. A new regional emergency notification system. Hopefully the public doesn't see any difference, but the backbone of that, uh, contract that makes it work has changed over the past month and there's been quite a bit of work in that transition. And, uh, um, so far it appears to be going fairly smoothly. We are starting from scratch, um, on registration, so there's a lot of media, uh, publicity going out to, to register. We're trying to encourage that, we want to make sure that the data is correct. Sometimes people change their information and, and we found that when you just transfer information, a lot of times you have, uh, errors. So we're trying to make sure that, that's done. Our new contract includes a lot more information and that seems to be, um, as recently as an exercise we had last week, uh, we tested a, a geographic small neighborhood notification and we actually checked with the neighbors to see if they got it and, and they did. And so it, it appears to be working, uh, very well. Next slide. Again, our information is posted on our website. It's a, um, and that's the public portions. There are some, uh, sensitive pieces of information or, or plans, things that when they get real specific, we, we sort of keep close hold. But the majority of it, the basic, um, pieces of it are there for people to look at. There's free templates, we encourage the public to have a plan themselves, whether they have a business or, or just for their home. Um, we have some templates up there to help them, we have programs that we can offer, everything from tours to, um, you know, workshops on what do you do when they say shelter in place? Or, or how do you handle evacuations? Or if you need, uh, briefings for your, your organization, we again encourage people to register, uh, for emergency notifications. We do, are able to get landline information, but cell phone information is voluntary. So we encourage the public to register no matter where they live in the Harden, Jefferson, Orange and Jasper County area. Um, we all are using a regional system. And so if you register through the STAN, S-T-A-N, Southeast Texas Alert Network, uh, program, that'll all be, um, that'll make sure people get the notifications when they need them, next slide. That's just a, a couple of, uh, reminders. Again, the checklist is there if you need that. Uh, make sure you're registering for, um, you know, whether it's windstorm or, or flood insurance. Uh, it doesn't kick in immediately. So we want to make sure that people do that. And there's some of the programs that we, we offer. Next slide. I believe that's all unless there's questions.
Councilman Durio?
Uh, Tim, I got one question. I signed up for the new STAN system and I keep getting messages about needleling. Is that just, is that a, why is that?
Well, one, one reason is it's the regional system and, uh, some of it's like, once you register, you're getting notifications that make, people make to everywhere. And that's something we'll have to work through.
That's something with the new system?
Right. And, and instead of being just, hey, this person registered, if you didn't put your actual address in there or, or maybe if the notification went to all residents, it may have gone more broadly than it's supposed to. But hopefully you have an address because, you know, if we do a, a, a specific geographic notification and we don't know where you live, the only way we really get you is if we do the whole area. And that's a large geographic area. So if, if you, you know, work down here, you can put multiple addresses in with the new system. So if you work in one place, live in another, maybe have a family member in another, you want to keep up with that. That way, when we do geographic notifications, it doesn't hit everybody. And I'll check on, on that.
Cause I think, I just, I think they asked for, I put my zip code in and, and it came up. If I'm not mistaken, it came up at, from Mid County or Taylor's Bayou or something like that.
Now, we have done, um, a couple of notifications, you know, through the drought. And, and one of the more recent ones was with our new system. And sometimes when you use caller IDs, they pop up with, um, like the last one I got said Port Arthur, even though it actually came from us. So I, I'll check into that, sir.
Councilman Getz?
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing, Tim. Uh, the street closures in Needleland are now popping up. When I re-register, I think they just asked for my phone number, maybe my zip, but I don't think they asked for my street address. But I'm not getting them from anybody else, but I am from Needleland, so.
We've been running so smooth in Beaumont.
I, I just want, uh, the citizens to know, even if you are already registered with STAN, you have to re-register with this new system.
If they've registered recently, no. But if they haven't registered in the last month, we would encourage them to re-register their cell phone.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Bruce, or do we have any, uh, citizens signed up for public comments?
No, this is for, no, this is for the public hearing. I'm sorry. And I'm, I'm sorry, did I miss it? Did you open up the public hearing before you did the presentation? So you, you?
I thought I did, but.
Not yet.
No.
I meant to. Does it, does that matter?
Well, you know.
Okay. Well, let's open the public hearing.
I would appreciate it. Thank you.
And does these, do we need to?
I'm checking on them. No, I don't have any that want to speak for the public hearing.
All right. Well, then I declare the public hearing closed. Uh, at this time, we're going to have, uh, council member comments and I'll start with Councilman Durio.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just want to take, uh, thank staff, uh, for their presentations and thank everyone for attending our evening meetings. And I just wanted to put a, uh, say something to the, some of the citizens in my ward. I've been getting a lot of phone calls about, uh, homeless camp at twenty-third and Washington Boulevard. And that, we have not received, that's, there's no homeless camp there. We don't have any plans to put one there. We don't have a, uh, it hasn't been presented. Staff hasn't presented a homeless camp location to city council yet. Now granted, that's something that's going to have to be addressed. But as of right now, there's no homeless camp at twenty-third and Washington Boulevard and no plans to put one there. And so I've been, gotten a lot of phone calls about that. And I've been trying to address it and I double-checked with staff to make sure I wasn't missing anything. And let citizens know before that happens, it's going to have to come before council and we're going to have to vote on it if I'm not mistaken. After that, doesn't the state have to approve it also?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So it's, that hasn't happened yet. Uh, feel free to call me if you don't see this, but there's no plan for that. And whenever we do, and maybe Councilman Getz can piggyback on that, it's going to be more than like the, in an isolated area, not in the middle of a neighborhood. So that's all I got, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Durio. Councilman Getz?
That's the first I've heard of anything at twenty-third and Washington. I know we have not discussed that at the homeless coalition meetings or anywhere as far as I know. So whoever's spreading that misinformation, uh, needs to check themselves. That's not right at all. I just want to tell the community and council and anybody else listening, uh, how much I appreciate the outpouring and love and support for my, uh, wife's, uh, recent passing and, uh, being there for me this past week has meant a lot. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Getz. Councilman Turner?
Uh, Mr. Williams, I know we do the dress-ups, but just a suggestion, and I probably would like to see that when we do do the breaks and the repairs, we maybe leave a note, letting the citizens know exactly how to get in touch with someone to give them a estimate or at least communicate with them in reference to the dress-up. I think we have a disconnect right there, even though staff's doing a good job. I just think that one little thing can help out with customer service. Uh, another thing is Tex dot, uh, the Washington exit, I've been getting a lot of complaints. I literally see wrecks there, you know, multiple times through the week. I don't know what we can do, uh, what can we do to kind of work with them to look at the traffic study of how the wrecks have occurred since we had that. But it's getting pretty bad and that traffic's, especially when the cars are flying off that, uh, exit ramp. It's kind of happening consistently. So I don't know what we can do from the city side to speak with them. But if we can, I would like to see what can be done.
Southbound, I assume you're talking about?
Yes, sir. Right by Golden Corral. Yeah, it was kind of like that mall when it was pretty bad. They made some adjustments. It got better, but it's kind of bad over there right now. Homeless Camp on twenty-third, I got a lot of phone calls about that. I'm glad you addressed it, Councilman Durio. I even had somebody told me, yeah, that neighborhood, that I never put a sign in that yard again if I don't get a quick answer on that. So thank you for addressing. I don't think we're going to put that in a neighborhood where we have state representative, county commissioner, district clerk all live over there. Yeah, yeah, I got a few calls and, you know, it's pretty, pretty firm. Uh, another thing I do want to thank, uh, Chief Singletary, we had a incident in the Beaumont Police Department. We had an incident at Shell gas station. That's pretty alarming. It was all over the internet. But to my understanding, most of those young men that did the harm have been arrested. So I actually want to compliment the Beaumont Police Department on getting that done in the expedited manner. We don't condone that in Beaumont and I appreciate y'all getting that taken care of, you know, pretty quickly. All right. Uh, next thing is my condolences to Mike Getz and the Nathan family. I attended the funeral. I was there for you. You did a good eulogy and my prayers are with you. You know, you ever need me, I'm a phone call away. All right.
Thank you, Councilman Turner. Councilman Felschall?
As mentioned, Sunday at noon at the Temple Emmanuel, we came together as a community to remember Allison Nathan Getz. And so to the Getz and the Nathan family, let me say that her life story was inspiring. And anytime we lose a person like this, you always ask the question, who will fill that void? Uh, for those of you that were there and you heard her life story, you realize it's going to take more than one person to fill that one. She was an amazing servant. I didn't realize, I mean, I knew Allison, uh, through being on the council and, uh, but I, I didn't realize how much she did. I've been in public service, I guess, for over forty years. But I left there thinking, hmm, I've got more work to do. Uh, she was an inspiration. So Mike and to you and her family, we are praying for y'all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Felschall. Councilman Sam?
Yes, I have nothing.
Councilman Neil? Okay. No comment.
I'd like to thank the citizens for, uh, helping us out during the drought restrictions. They did a, a great job conserving water for us. I know it was difficult, but, uh, we do appreciate it. And also wanted to thank the city manager for, uh, helping us out. He met with us, uh, daily there for a while during the peak and, uh, gave us the resources we need to, to get on top of things. Thank you.
Nothing, Mayor.
Mayor, I just want to update you and the council on the city's TERS project tax increment reinvestment zone. We have been working with the consultant over the past, uh, couple of months. And today they submitted the project and finance plan to the city that needs to be reviewed by internal staff. Uh, once we review it, uh, we will have a, a meeting with the city council and the consultant to go through it.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
Mayor, I'd like to piggyback on what Bart said. I'd like to thank all of you and, and this city and all of our, our employees for, uh, the work that we did going through the drought, you know, it was, it was a, it was a person in the ditch. It was a person answering the phone. It was a communications department spreading the message. Uh, it was all of us working together as a team to get through a very difficult time. And I, sometimes I think we don't realize how difficult a time it was, you know, when you're pumping forty-four million gallons a day and your capacity is forty-five, forty-five, uh, you're really at your wit's end. And so we, we really stepped up as a community to get through a really difficult time. And, uh, I commend everybody for that. And also I'd like to acknowledge our emergency management team for the work that they do. They work behind the scenes so much. We don't always see what emergency management people do. It's just when things happen that we're, we're looking for them. So we appreciate, uh, their commitment and what they do. And likewise, uh, Mike, uh, our sincere condolences goes out to you and your family and, and the Nathan family. Thanks.
Yeah. And I'd like to start by, uh, my condolences to Mike and, and the Nathans. And I've had the privilege, I had the privilege of knowing Allison since junior high school. And, uh, she was always a remarkable lady and from, uh, school age, she was a leader and she was always kind and compassionate and, uh, worked with everybody. And, uh, there was very few organizations she was ever a part of that she wasn't the president of it. And it was because of her servant's heart. And so she will be greatly missed. Uh, I, I know that, uh, I've certainly enjoyed this evening's meeting. And I know that everybody else in here, and maybe at one time I'll visit this again about the possibility of having evening meetings. And, uh, and, uh, I want to go along with what, uh, City Manager Williams just said, uh, we've just gone through and, uh, a difficult time with the stage three drought. And the, the city's done a remarkable job. And although the, uh, residents, uh, it was challenging for them. We appreciate how everybody worked with us. And I will promise you that as a part of those meetings every day, uh, as with everything, storms, floods, we learn how to do things better. There are after action, uh, studies that are done. And hopefully we won't ever have to put those into practice in the future. But if we do, we will be ready. And, and certainly city staff being prepared today. And, uh, oftentimes on the presentations, these are, aren't something that happen all the time. And so sometimes they get to come back to bring us more information. But we appreciate their patience and their hard work, uh, in all of this. And certainly all of the administrative team. And I'd like to end on, I'm grateful that my wife and my sister-in-law are here with us this evening. So I appreciate them being here. And with that, the meeting is adjourned.